Okay. Watch your soda can. Hi, Daniel's here and, uh... No, I'm seventeen. Mark, are you ready? Good evening, we're gonna get started, I'd like to call to order. Captain, would you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Captain, thank you everyone, please be seated. Before we get started, I would like to call for a moment of silence in regards to firefighter Patrick Brady, who died in the line of duty on November 5th while battling a fire in Brooklyn. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna get started, we have two presentations tonight. Unfortunately, we do not have a quorum yet, so we're not gonna conduct any business just yet, until more people come in, if they come in. So, at this point, we are gonna start with our presentations, and first up, we have Randy Piers here, who is the CEO of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. Randy? We are on YouTube, and we must use the microphone.
And I got one, about ten minutes? Is that fair? All right. So if anybody wants to follow along with the presentation, we got it up front. And I could also send it to anybody, so if you want to just give me your information afterwards, that's not a problem. So, my name's Randy Piers, President and CEO of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. So this is kinda like a refresher for some of you, in terms of the Chamber. Anybody here a business owner? Let me just, let me start with that. Okay? Anybody here running not-for-profit organization? Wei Yi, of course. Brooklyn Chamber's been around since 1918. Membership association for the business community, but people don't realize, we also have two other corporations, Brooklyn Alliance, which is our economic development arm, and we also have a lending arm called Brooklyn Alliance Capital, which is a CDFI, Community Development Financial Institution. All three of those entities are not-for-profit organizations, and our mission is really to support the small business community, in particular, throughout Brooklyn, and be the voice of the small business community as well. This is my second tour of duty at the Brooklyn Chamber, I had 2001, 2006. I was Vice President for Economic Development, under a guy named Ken Adams at the time, he's now President of LaGuardia Community College. And then I went to run a youth job training organization here in Brooklyn called Opportunities for a Better Tomorrow. We did that for eleven years, and then went to Reading, Pennsylvania, to run their Chamber for two years, hated it, came back home to Brooklyn, to run our Chamber in 2019, a couple of months before COVID. And really, what I really wanna stress in this presentation is how much we've been able to transform the organization through COVID. And it's a, it's a bad story, good story. The bad story was the challenge that COVID presented for our business community, and the impacts. The good part of the story is it enabled us, the Chamber, to do things that we couldn't have done without a crisis. So I'm gonna kinda walk you through some of the new things that we're, that we're doing. But in essence, we do four things. Promotion, support, advocacy, and convening. Promotion is about our businesses telling their story, getting the word out about what they do, so that they can do more business, get more customers, and, and deliver more services. Support is all the technical assistance programs that we operate. All of our technical assistance programs are free, and I'm gonna explain what those technical assistance programs are. Advocacy is the big-picture policy and legislative stuff, we work with elected officials, we work with our Assembly Member, like Lester Chang, in Albany, we work with our Council Members here in the city, to be the voice of the business community, and to really push back, in some cases, on legislation and policies that really hurt small businesses. And then convening is our ability to bring people around the table. We do most of that through committees, industry committees. So, we've got a Government Affairs Committee, we've got a Healthcare and Life Sciences Committee, we've got a Tech Committee, we've got a Real Estate Committee, we've, we run the Tourism Council for Brooklyn, so that's our role in terms of convening, and bringing people together. In terms of promotion, Brooklyn Buzz is our e-newsletter. If you go to brooklandchamber.com, you can sign up for the newsletter, you don't have to be a business owner to sign up for the newsletter, it's right there on the homepage, you can sign up. It is a very good source of information, goes out every other week, in terms of what we're doing, our event schedule, and our promotions for our business community as well. We're very active on social media, so whether it's Instagram, whether it's Facebook, whether it's LinkedIn, whether it's X, very, very active, just look up Brooklyn Chamber, and you will find us on almost every social media platform. Under the category of promotion, we do a lot of ribbon cuttings, so, new businesses that are opening in the community, we will be there, Lester's come to a lot of our openings in his district, we will bring the ribbon, we'll bring the scissors, we'll bring the press, we will bring elected officials out as well. We love to celebrate a business opening, get them off on the right foot. I will say this, there's been, one in seven businesses in New York City have started since COVID, that's a true statistic. What we don't talk about is how many businesses have closed. That's a different story, that's something that we need to really address, moving forward, because for a lot of different reasons. This is not an easy city to run a small business, and a lot of it is on the cost side of the equation, so, and I could talk to you more about that. We run the Brooklyn Business Solutions Center, in partnership with Department of Small Business Services, it is actually a physical center at Nine Bond Street in downtown Brooklyn. You don't need to be physically there, though, you can register for services online, so financing assistance, NWBE certification, legal referrals, business courses, we have a phenomenal business basics course, eight workshops for an entrepreneur thinking to start, thinking about starting a business. We love for people to go through business basics before they take the leap, because there's a lot of mistakes that you can make right out of the gate, and we don't wanna see you make those mistakes. Government facilitation, we do staffing, so businesses looking to hire, we will help with the hiring, and we do have a, you may not wanna hear this, but the city does require us to have an expert on the legal cannabis industry as well, so we have expertise in terms of the cannabis industry. Lester's laughing at that one, that's okay. That's all right, Lester, we're really high on that one, don't worry. Boom, bum, yeah, come on, lighten it up a little bit. So I was, I was a Community Board Chair for a number of years, Community Board Seven, too, by the way, and, and it is, I, I wanna say to Lori, and, and, and all of your Board Members, it was the most thankless job I ever had, but it is very important, the work that you do, and I just wanna say thank you to all the Board Members, because you're all volunteers, and you give of your time for your community and for your neighborhood, and that's a really, really great thing, so, I do wanna say that. During COVID, we launched the Small Business Resource Network. Businesses were struggling to reopen their doors, I took my learnings from Social Services, and I said, "We need a case management approach to helping small businesses to recover," which means we need to go to them, they don't need, they, they not expected to come to us, we needed to come out, knock on doors, meet the business where they're at, develop a service plan, and connect those businesses to whatever services and programs that they needed at the time. It evolved over time, from nothing to PPP, and other programs, and now, we still operate this free program, we're still in every neighborhood, we were just out on Bath Avenue a couple weeks ago, we did it with Assembly Member Colton and a few others, and we did some corridor walks, but that's about us being a 51-neighborhood Chamber of Commerce, so, we come to you, that's the message, in terms of the Small Business Resource Network. So that's the one-on-one, moving from the micro to the macro, we do merchant organizing and commercial corridor work through neighborhood economic development, we do this Avenue NYC Grants, for example, we will do merchant organizing, we worked with Wei Yi and Homecrest Community Services on Avenue U Corridor for a period, period of time, we did, in Canarsie, we did the Rockaway Parkway Merchants Association, we're working in Sheepshead Bay Road right now, that's about merchant organizing, developing merchant associations. Everyone wants a bid, maybe some people don't want a bid, it's not easy to get a bid, but merchant associations make a lot of sense, because you have an organizing entity and a commercial corridor that can be a voice for what's actually happening on that commercial corridor. We do that work, when we're requested to do that, and when we get some funds to do that work. What else? We got Small Business Resource Network, by the way, the Small Business Resource, any business can access, it's free, within three days, we come to your door. We've been working with manufacturers forever, and I say forever, because the history of Brooklyn's economy was once that of an industrial city, we were the fourth-largest manufacturing center in the United States, when we were building battleships at the Brooklyn Navy Yard. Like most Rust Belt cities, after World War II, when we lost heavy industry, we had a couple of gaps, right? And when I was growing up, seventies, eighties, nineties, I was a Canarsie kid, growing up in southeast Brooklyn, we had a different sort of reality, I will say, growing up, but guess what? We had a branded identity, separate from New York City, and we had all these industrial space that we could repurpose. So, fast forward to today, we're the heart of the creative economy for New York City, in part because we've taken places like Brooklyn Army Terminal, we've taken places like Industry City, we've taken places like the Brooklyn Navy Yard, we've transformed them into creative economy hubs, and then we took North Brooklyn, and we created Residential, which meant we were able to attract creative professionals to come and live in Brooklyn. That has been, that's the short version of the economic development strategy that took forty years for Brooklyn to rebound, from heavy industrial to creative economy. We work with manufacturers, we still manufacture some things, particularly in the food space, ethnic specialty foods, artisanal foods, so we work with manufacturers, particularly food manufacturers, we go to the Fancy Food Show at the Javits Center, we take them as a Brooklyn Pavilion, we also do it in the Las Vegas Fancy Food Show. In terms of financing, we are a micro lender, so we're not lending millions of dollars, but fifteen to twenty-five K, that's our sweet spot, and we work with businesses that generally can't access financing through banks and other traditional mechanisms, right? We launched a character-based lending program during COVID, through the Social Justice Fund, but once again, we're a micro lender, we're looking to fill gaps, and for businesses that are bankable and can get financing, we help you shop around for the right financing mix for you. So, Stevenson Joseph, he's phenomenal, he's on our team, he knows how to do this work really well. I mentioned workforce development, we have a staffing service for small businesses, we'll do the sourcing and the vetting to help you fill positions, we do three job fairs a year, we move it around, actually, I think our next one is gonna be at the JCH of Bensonhurst, is gonna be where we're gonna do the next one, I'll get you the date, I think it's in February. We do three of those a year in partnership with SBS, and we do apprenticeships. So we are the downstate partner for registered apprenticeships with the Manufacturing Assistance Center of Greater New York, so these are industrial and manufacturing apprenticeships, but we do that work, too, helping businesses to get an apprenticeship set up. On the advocacy front, we work with elected officials, policymakers, and by the way, we work with everybody, so I, I point this out because, and Lester knows this, what we do, the work we do is embraced by almost every level of government, because everyone cares about small businesses, or at least they say they do, they don't always act that way, but at least they say they do, so we work with all, all elected officials. We're the voice of what's happening on the ground, telling the story of what the businesses are facing, and what some of the challenges are, but we do that, we do public testimony, we put out an economic snapshot every year, every quarter, I'm sorry, very good data, Brooklyn-specific data, we, we pull it out of general data, and we distill it down to Brooklyn-level data, you can get this online at our website, brooklandchamber.com. We have a legislative visit to DC every year, we do an Albany visit as well, we do Brooklyn Night in Albany, we bring all this Brooklyn-made food up to Albany, and we host a big reception, and we put Brooklyn's culinary foot forward, so that all the upstate guys are coming, because they wanna taste of Brooklyn and everything like that, from, you know, Nathan's Hot Dogs, and Gabilas Knishes, and, you know, Tower Isle Beef Patties, and all the other good stuff. In terms of events, we have networking events, we have luncheon learns, which are informational events, we have six big-ticket events, signature events, we do a Black History Month Celebration Event at Weeksville in February, an Asian Heritage Month Celebration, and Night Market in May, we have an Energy Summit in June at the Brooklyn Navy Yard, which is a huge event for us, where we have expo, and we also bring in experts in, in the energy sector, we do a real estate event in the fall, we have a not-for-profit summit at St. Francis College every September, and then we end the year with our gala at El Caribe in Mill Basin, which is gonna be December 18th this year, and you're all welcome to purchase a ticket if you want to come. We run tourism for the borough, we run the Tourism Council, visitbrooklyn.nyc, this is an amazing platform, we try and distill down to a neighborhood level curated visits, because guess what? People come to Brooklyn, sixty-two million visitors come to New York, fifteen million make it to Brooklyn, by far the second-most visited borough, but where do they go? They go over the bridge, they take a picture in Dumbo, and they go back over the bridge, and maybe they come to Coney Island every once in a while. We want people to come visit Bensonhurst, we want people to come and visit Canarsie, we want people to come and visit Weeksville, right? We want people to understand that this is a big borough, there's a lot of history, there's a lot of great cultural organizations, a lot to do, a lot of culinary places and restaurants to visit. So, visitbrooklyn.nyc, it is the one-stop platform for visitors coming to New York. Last but not least, we have, oh, sorry, not two other things, quick, and I'll make it quick. We have an international division, Brooklyn has become an international brand, we do three trade missions a year, I was just in China, we had, and, we also were in El Salvador, and we were in Dubai, those were the last three we've done. We do work with foreign startups, particularly Korean startups, where we're embedding Korean products in Brooklyn-based companies to test proof of concept on a wider scale. We've hosted seventy-eight foreign delegations in the last four years, this is because they come to New York, and they wanna know why all their kids are talking about Brooklyn, so we roll out the red carpet, and we put on a show, this is what Brooklyn's all about. And then the last thing I will say, I'll end it with this, I'm happy to take some questions, we run two retail stores, the Brooklyn Made Stores, brooklandmadestore.com, online, one at Industry City, which is where our headquarters are, by the way, I moved the Chamber out of downtown Brooklyn, I moved the Chamber to Industry City four and a half years ago, but we have a store there, Brooklyn Made Store, and also downtown at City Point, check it out, brooklandmadestore.com, all your Brooklyn-oriented gifting needs, all in one spot, and by the way, what you're really supporting are independent makers and designers, because that's who we source the products from, and they're all independent makers and designers who live in Brooklyn. So, and that's about helping the small business economy, and helping these businesses to grow, and so forth. So I'm, I'm proud of all the change and the work that we've done since COVID, since I came back, I love what I do, I really am blessed to be able to do this work, I'll be honest with you, very few people can say they work for their, their hometown that they've lived in almost all of their life, and I've been able to do this, and I'm very grateful for that opportunity. Brooklyn is a very special place, and I think we all know that, because we've all chose to live here and to stay here. We figured out things that the world still hasn't figured out yet, right? Just look at this room, right? We figured out how to get along together, how to eat together, how to socialize together, how to understand each other, how to embrace each other, and do things that the rest of the world can't figure out. That's why this place is so amazing, that's why I'm blessed to be able to serve this borough, and at the end of the day, we're here to support the communities, the neighborhoods, and especially the businesses within those neighborhoods, so, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Any, should I take a question or two? Is there? Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
And now we have Captain Islam from the 62 Precinct.
Good evening, everyone, how's everybody doing tonight? I'll make this short, I don't wanna make it long, but that was a really great speech and a great presentation, I think I'm gonna have to open up a small business for my
We don't care. Just call them for an appointment because we have X amount of flu. So flu shots available. So please let everybody know. I leave my business card. Just call the office, put your name in, you're good to go. November 20th. Next thing I wanted to talk about is I'll be going to Washington next week and to advocate what we need to do over here, especially immigration and especially about businesses we need to protect. Especially, as Randy probably will know, that a lot of small businesses are being squeezed on overregulation, too much taxes. So hopefully, we can advocate. I believe in a very progressive idea called, let's have no income tax. Let's have no property tax. What do you think? Is progressive idea enough? That's my goal, and I'll try to lower it down. So that's my whole goal while I'm here in office, try to lower everything down to make it affordable, to make it competitive, to make it that people want to stay here, not leave here. So that's where I'm going next week. And remember, flu shots. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we have another presentation from Emergency Management Cert is here. So come on up.
No. I'm just, why I'm Good evening, everyone. My name is Elba Melendez, and I am here on behalf of the New York City Emergency Management Community Response Team, or CERT. I know a lot of you in this neighborhood have seen us. Our division chief is here, our district leader is here for this neighborhood, and another member from CERT. A lot of you I recognize from different events, so bear with me, I'll be quick. Our mission is to help New Yorkers before, during, and after emergencies. How many can tell me exactly when emergency is going to come to you? We don't know. We need to be prepared. So tonight, we always focus on a lot of things when we do presentations, but tonight, since the winter is arriving, we had snow yesterday. Come on. Tonight, we will be focusing on winter weather, what it means for our city, the common risks we face, and the steps that you can take to keep yourself, your family, and your neighbors safe during the colder months. Before I present on the specifics of winter preparedness, I first would like to provide some fundamental points on personal emergency preparedness. One, make a plan. Two, gather supplies. Three, stay very informed. Make a plan. Every household should have an emergency plan in place before winter or any emergency strikes. Creating an emergency support network can establish who to stay in contact with during an emergency and outline where to find your emergency supplies. We recommend that you should Sorry, we're supposed to have a PowerPoint, but it didn't come through. Trusted contacts in this network consisting of family, friends, neighbors, or caregivers is sure to at least include one contact in New York City and one contact out of New York City. Also have a transportation plan in case the subway or buses aren't running. For example, knowing where you could safely stay if you cannot get home from wherever you are at during an emergency. Make a plan. Think about how you'll communicate if the phones or internet goes down. We all rely on our telephones. I know a lot of us do not memorize everyone's number because we rely on the cellphone. We should make a list, download those numbers to make sure that you have them in your emergency bag, which I will talk about in a few minutes. Write down the key contacts, the health information, and any life-saving details such as allergies or medications. Knowing when you should evacuate, how you would evacuate, and where you would evacuate makes all the difference when time is not on your side. Gather supplies. One of the most important things you can do is prepare your emergency supplies. Could I ask one of you? David, can you give out those booklets? We might not have enough for everybody, but we could get some to you. I'm going to reference like two pages in the book, so I want you to at least look at it while I reference it. These will be called gathering supplies is one of the most important things you can do to prepare your emergency supplies for your go-bag. A go-bag could be anything that you could carry. A lot of you with children have book bags that they want a new one every year, and you take those and throw it in the closet. Use those as your emergency go-bag. Have one for each member of the family. Cater to what they need in that bag, plus you as the parent or the caregiver can be, make sure that you have the most important things in your own bag. As David gives out the pamphlet, I hope we got enough for everybody. You make sure you add items like an extra blanket, warm socks, gloves, and other cold weather gear. Make sure your go-bag is easy to carry and ready to go if you need to leave home quickly. I also suggest you should have one in your car or one in your job. If you cannot get home to get your bag, you could just grab what you got at home, I mean at work or in your car, and you'll be ready and safe. If we could share with other people there, maybe it'll help us, and then we'll get them to you. On page 13 of the pamphlet, you will find items that you might have in your go-bag. Maybe you could give this one out, too. Don't forget that you also need a go-bag for pets and service animals, because some animals might have a special diet, your caregiver, your service animal might also not be able to eat or have anything at a shelter if you have to evacuate. So you have to prepare everything and everyone in your home. Your stay-at-home kit, what you will find on page 16, is if you have to stay at home during emergency, you cannot leave at all. You had to have, make sure you have enough food, water, and essential items to last for at least seven days without power. Review the items you should have based on the picture. It's not on the screen, but it's in the booklet, those of you that have it, which is page 16. Stay informed of all emergency alerts. Information is key during an emergency, especially when weather conditions can change quickly. Sign up for Notify NYC to get free emergency starts right on your phone. You can text notify NYC to 692-692 to receive citywide alerts, and when prompted, reply with your zip code to get updates specific for your community. You can also download the Notify NYC app using the QR codes or 311 to subscribe. Winter preparedness. Why prepare for winter weather? As the weather have been saying, this winter might be one of those real bad ones, so we need to be prepared. New York City winters can bring extra cold, heavy snow, sleet, ice, and freezing rain. These conditions can disrupt our daily lives and create serious hazards. Winter storms often cause power outages, transit delays, down trees, and sometimes even flooding. There's also an increased risk of fires and carbon monoxide poisoning when people use unsafe heating methods. Preparing ahead of time helps reduce these risks and keeps our community safe. A few simple steps can make a big difference. That's what we'll be covering tonight. Prepare for winter. As I mentioned before, having a plan in place for emergencies is your best bet to ensure you and your family's overall safety. Being prepared to shelter in place for a couple of days or knowing where to get accurate and timely information can make a world of difference. When reviewing the items in your bag or your home supply kit, make sure to keep extra blankets, warm clothing, any prescription medications. I suggest you take pictures of all medications, including your glasses. And have a battery-operated radio to monitor weather updates. They're very cheap. You could get them at Amazon. You've got something you could crank that will also power your, they have USB on it so you can power your phone. And always have the batteries, but keep the batteries out if you're not using it. Now, during a winter storm or extreme cold, you call 911 to report down trees, power, or heat loss, or to request help for someone in need. Check on your neighbors, especially older adults, those with disabilities, or anyone who lives alone. Stay indoors if possible and avoid travel when the city issues warnings or bans. If you must go out, dress in layers, wear a hat and gloves, and cover exposed skin to prevent frostbite. Your small actions can make a difference in keeping everyone safe. If there's snow removal, who cleans what? After a storm, it's important to understand who is responsible for snow and ice removal in your area. New York City sanitation clears streets, crosswalks, and bus stops without shelters. Parks Department clears the sidewalks and crosswalks and around parks. Department of Transportation handles the bridges and overpasses. JCVCO, a city contractor, clears the bus shelters. The MTA is responsible for subway entrances. And New Yorkers are responsible for clearing your own sidewalks and driveways in front of your homes or businesses. Keeping the sidewalks and hydrants helps everyone, especially emergency responders. Winter is one of the most common times for home fires and carbon monoxide incidents, especially when people are using unsafe heating methods. Always use approved indoor heating equipment. Keep furniture draped in anything flammable at least three feet away from heaters. This also includes your plugs for your Christmas trees, which people are now decorating. So never drape clothes over a space heater to dry. Always keep an eye on your heating equipment. Never plug it into an extension cord. Heating equipment has to be directly on the wall. And turn it off before leaving the room or going to sleep. Overloading outlets, and make sure you have to avoid this, and working smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors should be in every room. To wrap up, a few takeaways. You make a plan. Know you'll communicate and where you'll go if services are disrupted. Gather supplies. Prepare both a go-bag and a safety stay-at-home kit with cold weather essentials. Remember, your go-bag could be for winter or summer. Just change it out seasonally, because some things you might put in there might be expiring. Your go-backs and your stay-at-home kits should be your own personal things that you need for yourself, but the booklet did give you some examples of essentials that should be in there, including those other things that will make you even more more, I'm sorry, keep you more abreast of what you need, because you might need your own medical kits. You want to have everything there. You might have your deed to the house or your rent receipt, something that will tell you if you have to evacuate, how are you going to prove that you live where you live? Or you're saying where you live? Have extra car keys. Have a place where someone, where your family can call if you evacuate. Kids are in school and they cannot get to your home because you had to evacuate, please make sure that they know exactly where to meet you or who to call, so you can be assured that they're safe if you cannot get to your home. Stay informed with Notify NYC. Monitor updates of these trusted resources. You can visit on.nyc.gov/makerplan to create your plan and nyc.gov/notify to sign up for the alerts. Remember, preparation doesn't just protect you, it strengthens your whole community. And if you want, for more extensive presentation, which usually our presentations take like an hour, we bring all the supplies for the presentation. We do it at houses of worship, schools, community events, community board meetings, precinct council meetings. You can reach out to our chief, Jonathan Castro, which is here at 347-664-4471, and he can make all the arrangements with you, and we will come out and do an extensive presentation for you, because usually it takes more than an hour, including the questions. So if you have any questions, we'll be here a little longer, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Ross will now be doing a roll call. He will be calling members who are not here. So if we call your name and you are here, please jump up.
Okay. Glib Dolatov, Nicholas Eng, Alan Esses, Matteo Ferentelli, Leon Froh, or Freu, close enough? F-R-E-U-E. Jeffrey Harris, Li Ning He, Roy Jung, Emily Lamb, Tim Law, Charles Lee, Donald Liao, Xiaorong Lo, Nancy Satili, I always get that one wrong. Seranto Sumakis, Ahmed Uzir, Catherine Vero, Raymond Wei Ming Wong, Yi Hizao, and Shuben Zhu. Shuben Zhu? Okay. We have quorum.
We have quorum. See, I was just saying, joking around, but it's true. I'm very short, so I can't see back there when you come in. So that's why we do that, just to be on the safe side. We're going to continue with the public portion, so I know there are some reps here. We're just dealing with one mic. So reps that are here who want to speak, please come up. Start lining up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marco Arriaco, and I'm a representative for Congresswoman Nicole Malliotakis. Nicole Malliotakis is unable to be here tonight as she's currently in DC working for her constituents. However, she does send her warmest regards. The Congresswoman is proud to have voted for fully reopening the government last night, something which has affected millions of families throughout the United States, and many of those being within our district. She's happy that many benefits are now restored, such as SNAP, WIC, and veterans' benefits as well. On top of that, those benefits are actually funded, not for the only the rest of the year, but for a full year. So now, they're good until then, even if something does happen in the meantime. Those benefits, which are highly needed, will now be safe, and those who need it will now have it. And then, of course, in addition to that, if anybody does need help, we can help you with any federal issues, such as immigration, taxes, IRS, or any other federal agencies that you may need help with. Just please come see me in the back, and I'll give you a business card. And if we can't help you, then we'll try and reroute you to any other sources that can help as well. So thank you so much, and have a great night, and have a great and safe holidays. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ari Kagan. I'm a senior advisor for New York State Senator Stephen Chen. And today, he hosted one conference about, some people call it minor problem, but I believe it's a very serious problem. Federal Dragon Food Administration recalled all frozen shrimps imported to the United States from Indonesia, because they had some radiation materials inside. And unfortunately, in southern Brooklyn, including in Bensonhurst, and Dacre Heights, and Sunset Park, and some other areas, some people sell it on the street for three packs, for $10 for three packs. So please do not buy frozen shrimps from illegal vendors on the street. It can cost you life. So I know it's a minor problem, but it could be a serious problem. I wanted to tell you this information. And also, of course, we just celebrated 250 years of Marine Corps, and Veterans Day, and Stephen Chen is a former Marine, and also 27 years in NYPD, so he congratulated his fellow Marines and fellow veterans. He visited some of them. He does it on a regular basis. Our office is located 6605 Fort Hamilton Parkway, and we have visits from veterans and police officers, and of course, everybody else daily. Phone number is 718-333-0311. Please visit us. We can help you with all state issues and actually any other issues. If we cannot solve it on a state level, we send to our city and federal representatives. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Wincy. I'm a community advocate in the office of Councilmember Alexa Abilas. Some updates. There is an upcoming immigration hearing on December 8th, where four pieces of legislation will be looked at that will provide greater protections for our immigrant communities in New York City. Next Tuesday, November 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, there will be a community visioning workshop at New Utric Library. As you know, HPD and the BPL are collaborating on the redevelopment of New Utric Library to allow for a new state-of-the-art library, along with 100% affordable housing. So please RSVP to attend and learn about this redevelopment of the library and share your ideas. There's flyers on the table and the QR code. Also, every first Monday of the month, we have Veteran Services Office hours at our district office from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. All services are provided free of charge to veterans and their families by Veteran Service officers. Next Saturday, November 22nd, our office is organizing a street co-naming ceremony for Donna Maxwell, who is a community activist and former council president for the 72 precinct. It will take place at Fourth Avenue and 17th Street and start at noon. All are welcome. Finally, we continue to have office hours here at Il Centro in the lobby area. The next and last one of the year will be Thursday, December 11th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Please see all the flyers on the table and wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tal Litwin. I'm here representing VP Antonio Reynoso. I just have one announcement, which is that community board applications are now live. So if you're interested in applying to your community board, please go to our website, which is, just Google Borough President Antonio Reynoso, and they'll take you there. That's all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanne Genosa. And to piggyback on what the young lady just was talking about, that it recently came to light that there is a plan in progress to tear down the library and build affordable housing at that site on 86th Street between 17th and 18th Avenues. And also to take away the adjacent parking lot, which is also along there. This is worrisome for the tax-paying citizens of the neighborhood who do not wish to see this project come to fruition. This neighborhood is not zoned for dwelling such as this, and really cannot handle the increase in population. Also, there's a lack of parking to begin with, and to take away the municipal parking, it's going to be a big problem. The neighborhood is already fighting a homeless shelter on 25th Avenue and 86th Street, and a possible lithium battery facility on Bay 14th Street and 86th Street. And we also have the Marlboro Project houses right down the road a piece. It's not fair. The neighborhood is being targeted over and over again. There are other areas much more suitable. I have a list of them. I'm not going to go through them and bore you with that. But there's other neighborhoods also that don't even ever get touched, like Dacre Heights, Bay Ridge, Borough Park, and also Staten Island. The community board members never reached out to us here in the community, although it says so on the New York City Housing Preservation Development website, that you did, and you sent out flyers. It did not happen. We received nothing. And we are also very aware of the bait and switch that occurred in Marine Park on the Coyle Street site, which they agreed to affordable housing and is now going to be a homeless shelter. And there's nothing now that they can do about it. So to say what she was telling us about, there will be a meeting at the library, the same site where this is proposed. It's going to be on November 18th between 5:30 and 7:30. William Colton will be there. I've been trying to get Susan Zhang on board. Their, her office seems to be confused that this is even her district. It's not, so who is? Okay, so then, she, oh, I don't know. The way they're breaking up districts. She was here? Okay, well, anyway, she's here right now? Yeah, yeah. Where is she? Oh, that's you? Wonderful. Okay, so can I speak with you after, you know, after this about this? Okay. Yeah. So basically, that's it. We don't want this project here. And I don't know why this is being allowed to occur when we're being hit over and over and over down this corridor of 86th Street. It's a bit much. Okay.
Hi, I'm Nancy Roden. I'm a representative for Councilman David Carr. He wants to thank everyone. He was re-elected in this last election, so he'll still be representing the area in Brooklyn that he covers. We're going to start having our satellite office at the Knights of Columbus on 86th Street. Hopefully, we'll have a schedule soon. And he's always there to help out if anybody needs. You could call the office. I should have business cards at the next meeting, so things move slowly. But, okay, that's it. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
I wanted to suggest this now because I'll forget if I wait till my report. We didn't send out any flyers about this, and we were, well, that's incorrect info that you got, because we never sent out flyers. We just had one meeting in June that they presented to us, but now they're having all these community visioning workshops and all. If anyone's not signed up, you should sign up for it to get their notifications, and they're having one the next week. But we have no application in front of us, so we haven't had a meeting on it yet, because there's no way for us to have a meeting without an application in front of us yet. Yeah, right. Well, we put it in our newsletter already about it, so people should sign up for it.
Hi, I'm Shreya with Councilmember Susan Zwang's office. I'm our legislative and communications aide. Our main announcement today is that we're having Thanksgiving mailboxes for older adults in District 43. So if you know anybody that needs a Thanksgiving meal, please feel free to reach out to our office, and we will be able to help out with that. We also have more leave bags at our office.
same site where this is proposed. It's going to be on November 18th between 5:30 and 7:30. William Colton will be there. I've been trying to get Susan Zhang on board. Their, her office seems to be confused that this is even her district.
It's not.
It's not. So who is? Okay. So then, she, oh, I don't know. The way they're breaking up districts. She was here?
Yeah.
Oh.
She mentioned her.
Okay. Well, anyway, she's here right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where is she?
Right there.
Oh, that's you. Wonderful. Okay. So can I speak with you after, you know, after this about this?
No.
Okay. Yeah. So basically, that's it. We don't want this project here. And I don't know why this is being allowed to occur when we're being hit over and over and over down this corridor of 86th Street. It's a bit much. Okay?
I'm Nancy Roden. I'm a representative for Councilman David Carr. He wants to thank everyone. He was re-elected in this last election, so he'll still be representing the area in Brooklyn that he covers. We're going to start having our satellite office at the Knights of Columbus on 86th Street. Hopefully, we'll have a schedule soon. And he's always there to help out if anybody needs. You could call the office. I should have business cards at the next meeting, so things move slowly. But, okay, that's it. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
I wanted to suggest this now because I'll forget if I wait till my report. We didn't send out any flyers about this and we weren't, well, that's incorrect info that you got because we never sent out flyers. We just had one meeting in June that they presented to us, but now they're having all these community visioning workshops and all. If anyone's not signed up, you should sign up for it to get their notifications. And they're having one the next week. But we have no application in front of us, so we haven't had a meeting on it yet because there's no way for us to have a meeting without an application in front of us yet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Well, we put it in our newsletter already about it, so people should sign up for it.
I'm Shreya with Councilmember Susan Zwong's office. I'm her legislative and communications aide. Our main announcement today is that we're having Thanksgiving mealboxes for older adults in District 43. So if you know anybody that needs a Thanksgiving meal, please feel free to reach out to our office and we will be able to help out with that. We also have more leave bags at our office. I know there's a lot of leaves, you know, falling on the streets and everything with it being fall. So feel free to reach out to our office about those two main things and any other concerns. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Tamby John and I'm the branch manager for the New Yutrikt Library. And yes, as you've all heard, there is going to be a community envisioning event on Tuesday, November 18th, 5:30 to 7:30. Please RSVP. Please come out. Let your voice be heard, whether it's on the pro side or the con side. Please come out. Part of the project is not to replace the library, but to renovate the library, just as a correction. Because some people think that the library is going away. It's not going away. It's going to come back as a brand-new building, according to this project. But please come on out to hear more information and let your voice be heard in regards to this project. And in the meantime, just wanted to remind everyone that the library is still open, 1743 86th Street. It continues to open. I'm here on behalf of my branch, as well as the Hylawn location. I just want to let you all know that we continue to provide programming for children, teens and adults, as well as older adults. Programs such as citizenship prep on Fridays, 11 to 1:00 PM. English conversation on Thursdays, 6 to 7:00 PM. We have homework help for grades 1 to, 1 through 8 on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 5:30. We have chess workshop for children from 12:30 to 1:30 on Saturdays. So we have a slew of programs that we're doing. And if any suggestions you have for programs, please come to the libraries. Give us a call. We'll do the best we can to make sure we do something for you. So once again, thank you all for your support. You've been with us throughout the years and I hope you could continue to be with us as we move forward. And wishing everyone a very pleasant, safe, and joyous holiday season.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Venus Scanteberry. I serve as Brooklyn Outreach for the City Civilian Complaint Review Board. Essentially, we're a city agency that independently investigates and mediates NYPD misconduct or jurisdictional force, abusive authority, discourtesy, and offensive language. Anyone who may need this information, I'll add some brochures to the table. But on some more exciting news, our youth advisory council applications are now live. This is a working committee made up of young leaders between the ages of 10 to 18 that want to be more civically engaged and find, and find community solutions to police and community members, specifically with youth. They do a lot of great team-building activities. This year, they were able to record not one, but two iHeartRadio ad stations, one in English and Spanish. So we're trying to broaden their horizons on the many ways you can be civically engaged. I left applications on the table. Deadline is December 31st. And other than that, I wish everyone a beautiful holiday season. Take care.
My name is David Zubin. I am the district leader of District 11. So why don't I come out here, talk to you for a few seconds? If you was not able to get a pamphlet, next Tuesday, that we have all been talking about is the library event, where we will be giving out important information on what to do more steps. If you cannot make it to that event, we have partnered with the library. Every other month, we will be doing tabling events from 3:00 to 5:00 and doing any way we could get back to the library and helping out the community. If you do have any questions, please see me after this and we will have a quick conversation. If you want to join, sir, we are looking. Thank you very much.
How are you all? My name is Mirza. I'm representing Pineapple Ride. Some of you guys have, might have come to our events on Bay Parkway. We've just wrapped up our 11th event of the year, about 1,500 pounds of garbage removed from that area. Don't worry, there's more than enough trash for all of you guys if you're going to come by next time. Two kids, two full classes of kids have learned how to ride a bike, hundreds of cups of coffee served, and yeah, a lot of work done. We plan on applying for that area to become a plaza come January. We've already been emailing with the commissioners of the DOT and some of the other elected officials. So just giving you guys a heads up on what we're doing. Hope to see you guys at the next one. Thank you. Have a good day.
Do I have anyone else from the public? Going once? Twice? Public session is now closed. Can I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting? Joe, second. All in favor? Nays? Eyes? Okay. Everyone's had a chance to look at the October minutes that Marnie sent out from October 9th. Are there any edits? Any corrections? None? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the October 9th minutes? Chung, second. All in favor? Any nays? Okay. Any abstentions? Good. Moving along. Okay. My report. I'll be short and sweet, I promise. You guys might have heard that last Wednesday, there was a bias incident that happened at Morgan David Yeshiva, where unfortunately swastikas were painted on the front of the building. We're proud of the diversity of this neighborhood and will not tolerate or normalize any hate or acts of violence based upon race, ethnicity, or religion. We stand together as one community and we do want to thank the NYPD who are actively investigating this situation. Tao already mentioned about applications coming out for community boards, so you should have received an email to fill out those applications. They have to be in by February 6th of 2026. Also, we received a meeting request to introduce the board to a proposed land use app for 7502 New Yutrikt Avenue. Applicant is seeking a zoning map and text amendment to rezone an area from an R5-C2-2 to C4-4D. The proposed actions would facilitate development of a new 11-story building to include 51 dwelling units and would provide at least 13 affordable units. Planning and zoning committee is going to meet November 19th at Homecrest on 69th and 15th at 7:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to attend. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to our district manager.
And I will be short and sweet, too. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to meet with our district superintendent of our sanitation garage and our parks manager to discuss the plans for this winter's snow removal. Both agencies have enough equipment and resources to address snow removal in the district, or so they say. We shall hold them to that. As we move into November, we enter night plow season, where the Department of Sanitation increases staffing on night shifts to ensure sufficient manpower to address weather-related issues. During this time, the personnel are scheduled for regular cleaning and collection. Therefore, we strongly suggest that you place your material out for collection before midnight because they probably will be rotating on the overnight hours and we don't want to see miscollection or garbage sitting out. As you know, on October 30th, we had some strong storms move into the area and tragically two lives were lost due to flooding in the city. There were areas in our districts that were flooded. The catch basins couldn't handle the amount of rain that came down in such a short amount of time. And with the heavy winds, we had a tremendous amount of leaf fall that covered the basins, which contributed to the street flooding. Additionally, we had strong waves along the promenade with washover including Bay Parkway. Sections of the sidewalk along the bulkhead collapsed and DOT, out of an abundance of caution, will be closing the end of Bay Parkway while they determine the extent of the undermining. In addition, the Department of Sanitation provided, a little late, but we have free leaf bags for residents. They will collect all of your leaf and yard waste curbside on your composting or recycling day. I have some bags here. Please take. If there are not enough, you can stop by the district office or you can put your leaves in a clear plastic bag or a clean garbage can and they'll be happy to take it from in front of your home. The Department of Transportation will be installing two new shared, uh, one new shared-use locker within the district as part of Locker NYC, which is a pilot program that aims to cut down on package thefts and reduce delivery truck trips. The location of the new locker is planned for auto-forward motors at 2121 Cropsey Avenue. The lockers will be available for the public to use free of charge 24/7 with participating carrier companies. I had the opportunity to join Councilmember Zwong as she recognized the workers of ACE Programs for the homeless, who provide supplemental cleaning on our commercial corridors. She also announced that she secured $250,000 to support ACE's continued operations in the district. And I want to thank her for continually supporting supplemental sanitation services in the district. They are terribly needed and it goes a long way. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ross Brady with our zoning and planning committee report.
Sorry, I knocked you over there. Okay. I'll try to be quick, but we do have an action item. We have one item to vote on and one to presentation. So Planning and Zoning Committee met on October 21st to hear the findings of a shadow study on property at 1616 McDonald Avenue, in which the applicant is seeking a special permit for the enlargement of the existing building. CB 11 held the public hearing on June 12th, 2025, and we voted to table until that shadow study was presented. So the study found that at certain times, on December 21st, between 9:30 AM and 11:10 AM, for example, there'd be a shadow of about 1 hour and 40 minutes. And in the worst-case scenario, on the longest day, which we know is June 21st, there'd be a shadow over people's properties for about 3 hours and 20 minutes, from 8:15 in the morning to 11:35 in the morning. So the applicant then advised that they would provide at least a 10-foot rear yard, a 10-foot rear yard rather than the original plan 5-foot rear yard, which would provide something of a buffer to the residents not to feel so enclosed in. And the residents seemed to appreciate that. The resident who had voiced concerns at the public hearing was in attendance and they were agreeable to that compromise. Therefore, the committee recommends approval of the special permit with the provisos that there is at least that 10-foot setback and there'll be no mechanical or attenuated windows in the rear yard and that there will be the appropriate soundproofing. So with those provisos, I need then to ask for a, we submit that as the committee's recommendation for approval and we put it forth to, for a motion to the members of the board. If there are any questions before the vote? If not, motion?
10 foot, is that the max that they can vote?
Yes. And originally, it was five. And the tenants that are there, the owners that are there seem to be happy with that.
Okay with that?
Yes. So if there are any other questions, if not entertain the motion? Okay. Joe and, okay. So moved. And the second matter was it's just advisory. There's no need for a vote. We also heard a presentation on a proposed zoning map amendment that would rezone 1663rd Street, which for the record is block 5568, Lot 7, as well as adjoining 55, block 5538, Lots 32, 36, 40, and 132, and portions of Lot 4 and 65 from an M11 to an M14A, both manufacturing districts. The applicant seeks to expand an existing three-story mixed commercial office, light industrial and community facility building to contain four additional stories, which provide needed space for existing services, I think mostly nonprofits. Current tenants include professional service offices, office space for a pharmaceutical company, the HASC, a commercial adult daycare service in electronic parts, and a medical, educational use related to children with special needs. This is just an initial presentation. There are no formal land use applications before the board at this time, so when there are more, you'll know. And that is the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Any new business? Any old business? Who wants to make that wonderful motion? Everybody wants to make the motion. Everyone's in favor? All right. Have a wonderful evening. Have a happy Thanksgiving and see you next month. Thank you.